Let's begin. So, I'll do that by saying that. Welcome everyone to this November meeting of Saginaw City Planning Commission. You're here to present a case, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, make your presentation. We may ask you questions for clarity or for more information. A simple majority vote of the members present will decide on your request. If you're here to speak in public comment phase of the meeting, please also come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and direct your comments to the commission. We have no time limit, but brevity is appreciated. So, let's begin with the roll call.
Okay. James Doan.
I'm here.
Fred Zerickel.
Here.
Robert Hanley.
Here.
Jack Nash.
Present.
James Nightingale.
Present.
David Taggart.
Here.
Larry Cloris. He's in the other room.
He is? Is he hiding?
He's been here and gone.
He's talking with a manager.
Uh-oh. That can't be good.
Yolanda Jones will be absent tonight.
And temporarily Larry.
Yes.
Come on Larry. Come on.
All right. I'm gonna wait for Larry before I call this.
I can see him. Well, I can consider him present then.
Okay.
I did see him, so.
First item is approval in the minutes from October. As we discussed before the call to order, those minutes will be brought to the next meeting. Under new business, we have case number 14-0047, a site plan review for a multi-unit, single-family condominium with attached and semi-attached garages and a 3,600 square foot retail space at 406 North Hamilton.
May proceed with the presentation.
My name is Nicholas Seofer, 1100 South Washington, Saginaw, Michigan, 48601. I'd just say, like to say thank you for letting me use some of your time tonight to present our new project here in Saginaw, and hopefully get your approval so we can move forward this project. As Scott explained, this is a mixed-use residential with some live-work space planned in Phase 3 of this project. But the project is located on the corner of North Hamilton Street and Madison, with Niagara being on the other side of the property. There's currently two parcels that are gonna be combined into one parcel for this project. It is 314 North Hamilton and 406 North Hamilton. When you combine the two parcels, the site ends up being about 2.398 acres. Currently, it is zoned RMU, or riverfront mixed-use, as well as all the surrounding properties that abut this parcel as well. We're proposing a phase development, as you can see on the site plans that we submitted, with residential and some mixed-use which would be towards the third phase, depending on how the site actually sells and what the demand is as the development moves forward. But Phase 1 will contain 12 total residential units. We would have eight double units along Hamilton, which is one unit per floor. They're a two-bedroom, two-bath situation with approximately 2,100 square feet for each unit. Along the vacated Niagara, we would have four single units. They're two-story units. They are, you know, a single owner with approximately 2,500 square feet total with about 1,250 square feet per floor. And those, depending on how you look at the bedrooms, it's a two slash three-bedroom unit, two and a half bath. Each of the units all have covered garages for private use. In order to do that, we created the central drive down the middle of the site so that it kinda acts as a private alleyway, where the residents would be able to pull in off Madison and then be able to pull directly into their garage spaces. The central drive will also be used for storm systems, water distribution, gas distribution, power distribution, with creating a new right-of-way for the water and utilities. I'm gonna flip this over here. The exterior of the buildings are gonna be of what I would call a construction, meaning brick and stone, asphalt shingles. Of course, we're gonna use all energy-efficient materials, especially windows, doors, meeting the codes and all the insulation factors that are required now by code. Each unit's gonna have exterior balconies so that each owner can have a little outdoor space that's private to them. But then we also created some green areas so they could have some places to just kinda go out and be in nature, so to speak. But also, we're gonna connect this to the river, which is just on the other side of the railroad tracks. And that's our project. It will all be on crawl space due to... This portion of the site along Madison is actually in the flood zone, so part of the project is to raise that back up out of the hundred-year flood, so crawl spaces will be required in order to kinda get that up and still keep the site fairly level.
Okay. And I understand the plan is to do it in three phases. So, when Phase 1's being constructed, what is the rest of the site going to be until Phase 2 gets developed and Phase 3 gets developed? Will the main drive be initially installed with Phase 1 with all the utilities stubbed in? What's the plan?
All the utilities will be run down the main drive, but we plan on Phase 1 only to develop the road in here, but all the utilities would be in, and then the rest would be converted to green space.
Okay. So then, with that green space, the fencing that's called for around the property, would that be initially installed?
Yes.
Under Phase 1?
Yes.
Are your major dashed lines there separating Phase 1, 2, and 3?
Yes. The heavy, dark lines are where we're proposing the phases. If Phase 1 goes really well, Phase 2 and 3 would be just like, you know, immediate. But we're trying to test the waters of what is viable in downtown Saginaw right now. We think this is the time. Things are turning around down there, and there's interest.
What kind of crawl spaces are you gonna have? Is crawl space cross-sanitary and not sanitary? Is there any specific kinda crawl space you're gonna have? Would be a sanitary, not sanitary?
Most likely, we'd probably do a concrete, a three-inch cover underneath for rodent protection.
Currently, that property has a grade from Hamilton down towards Niagara.
Slight, yes.
What do you do about that grade? Are you intended to terraced it, or are you gonna level that all off?
No, we plan on terracing it. The properties along Hamilton would be higher, but as you would, you come out, you can step down into the garage, and then again, towards the street would be able to slope, step down a little bit more. So, it would be a gradual terrace down towards Niagara.
But you also said a requirement to raise to be out of the flood plain.
Yep.
How much would that require?
I think we're about two feet. And I think there's about three or almost five feet of fall, according to the original survey.
Is that the dotted line showing on the topographic survey plane?
The one that runs through the middle?
Well, this one.
Yep. Which dotted line? I'm sorry.
Well, the one that's covering quite a bit of the area of the site.
This was a preliminary survey, and that's a grade line, and I cannot remember what it is off the top of my head. I think it's, I wanna say 597, but there is a little bit of a flat spot due to what we did when we leveled the site and kinda encapsulated everything when we put a dorm in.
And you mentioned connecting to the river. Exactly what? How would that be done?
The engineering department has requested that we continue the sidewalk that runs down Madison to take it out to the existing sidewalk that has a loop out there on the river. So that residents, not only of our property, but of adjoining properties could walk down Madison and get on that little river loop that we connected.
So, ever taken beyond railroad tracks?
Correct.
Sure.
Are there the questions?
Yes, they do. The existing railroad tracks, what's the frequency of use on that? Daily?
It is, we are told it's once a week.
Once a week?
And we cannot get a time yet, but it is very infrequently used compared to the other tracks in downtown.
Are you aware whether the railroad's future plans include vacating it?
Not to our knowledge. They have not indicated anything in our contact with them.
But once a week. It's used today. Hmm? It was used today.
Those tracks would be used primarily to service those elevators on the south end of Niagara. Is that what they're used for?
You know, I'm not quite sure on that. I thought it continued past and continued on.
I think that must be true. I think that's part of the major line that goes to Midland. Am I right?
Also, the trains from Rifkin regularly load, and I know they may get a lease pass past Holland, and it's usually at 1:00, and everybody wants to be on time for work on the way back. Yes, they are used by other than the great elevator.
Is that the line that goes by Rifkin?
Yes. Yes.
And the southeast corner, that's part of your property, or is that an extension of the Corvette shop?
Are you talking down?
Your fingers above it.
This is, the line just continues on?
No, the, I'm off the railroad. I'm back to property.
Oh, okay.
I'm back to property. That lower left-hand corner, the southeast corner, is that part of the, is that square part of this project?
Yeah.
Or does that belong to the...
The city's gonna vacate Niagara so that we can have an access point down there, but the rest of Niagara would be vacated along our property.
Well, you have a piece of property that looks maybe about a third of a block. The southeast corner.
That's right.
Bottom left.
Is that here?
Yes. Bottom left.
This is where Niagara refers to those two.
I think he's talking about right there, right above your pen.
But this property line continues this way.
Yeah. That is not yours.
That is not currently, right now.
Or whatever that shop is. Is that right?
I think that's the delivery service on that corner.
Okay.
The Corvette shop is up on...
Up on the Hamilton side.
Are there any prospective plans for the retail building?
Not at this time. We were asked to keep an open mind for a live-work space as we phased into it. It makes more sense to bring it into the third phase where there's already existing commercial. Phase 3 could be, if it's really well, it could be all live-work space.
But that would be a new building.
Correct.
Part of the project.
Correct. And we would come back for that.
Which building is it adjacent to that? Is that the theater?
Corvette.
Corvette shop.
Dynamic Corvette.
I just have a question. I know you've done these in phases, and your Phase 1, 2, and 3. And as I count up Phase 1, we're at about eight units, and then right along Hamilton, there's probably about nine. Why was it split up that way? Do you know? You know, how come Hamilton isn't built up first right along the street and then...
You mean, build everything along Hamilton?
Yeah.
We need the mix. You need the mix of, you know, a single-story versus a two-story versus a totally separate townhouse, or where you would have two floors. I mean, to us, the Niagara side is the desirable side.
Right.
But we also need to get a little bit heavier density along Hamilton to make it viable.
Okay. So, you know, we were talking about that rail line, and is there any, like, not a privacy, but you know, something about a sound barrier or wall that's gonna be there, or just you're gonna leave it open and the train will be there?
We plan on doing a small berm to at least block it visually, but you all know how low those strains are. There is absolutely nothing you could do except for build a solid wall. So, our tenants are, I'm sorry, our owners, 'cause these are for sale, not for rent, are gonna be made aware of that at time of purchase. I work right next to an active line on Washington, and after a while, it just kinda fades away. I know. We are gonna build the building so they don't shake.
I get you.
If I'm hearing you correctly, Phase 2 is contingent on the success of Phase 1?
Correct.
So, there's no way right today that you could tell us when this would start?
Phase 1 will start this spring. Phase 2 will be very dependent on how well Phase 1 sells.
That makes sense. Thank you.
And what, when will the whole street be vacated?
The process will be starting very soon. With, obviously, the planning commission.
It'll be vacated between Madison and...
We're gonna probably have access to the one building, though. So, they're building.
Yeah, we kept the portion that comes past. Their property gives us a secondary access.
Yeah.
What's the difference between garage spaces and a two-car garage?
With the blocks being two units per along Hamilton, we're gonna do a group garage for those two buildings. So, each individual will have what you call the old city parking garages. It'll be a very skinny garage space. So, it'll be four garages in that one building. And then on the two-story, you would have a two-car, you know, attached garage.
So, we're not talking about carports for Hamilton?
Absolutely not.
Can we see the illustration you have there? If that's what that is, I assume it is. The color don't make me sell on these colors. I'm not quite totally happy with the colors.
As you can see, it's a very attractive facade, I think, along Hamilton and especially along the river.
So, that bottom part, we'd be looking from the riverside, I guess. The two-story.
I have to check my notes. I get confused on these two.
Somewhere in there. Well, it's from the... This is the Hamilton Street facade that you would see driving down Hamilton, and then this is what you would see as your flood element. They both look two-story. That's a good, this building is 36 feet in height, and this is 35.
So, the lower one is on the Hamilton frontage?
Correct. That's what you would see as you drive from downtown.
Are you the architect?
Yes, I am.
You have good work.
Thank you.
So, you haven't decided on the brick yet, it sounds like.
Well, everything's depended on pricing and everything.
Pricing, oh yes, there is that.
We do have to build these for our cost where we can make them viable for our site as well. But I mean, we're looking at the reds and, you know, the greens, and very natural colors. I mean, the setting is very natural, so.
What do you plan on for lighting?
Exterior lights. In the center drive, I would place light poles where I can, there's not a lot of access, and then use some building-mounted, shielded, to light up that alleyway, and then I would just probably rely on exterior mounted lights on the actual street sides.
You have a gate on the Niagara side, and another entrance off Madison. Is that also gate? Oh, yes, I see it.
It's gated, but I mean, the fence is only four feet high. It's more of a deterrent than it is a security measure.
Yep. Very nice.
Where is, on this illustration, where is the actual property line on the Niagara side?
It's basically a zero lot line, so that edge of that building is right on the lot.
Oh, okay.
With this vacating Niagara, I tried to get a little extra room up on Madison. I mean, Hamilton Street, to get a little green space up there on that street instead of just parking the building right against the sidewalk.
But if you wanted to put a berm up there...
We're gonna be allowed to use the vacated Niagara space for landscaping. Since, I mean, the railroad has a, I think it's the width of their tracks. I mean, I incorrectly show the right-of-way because the railroad wouldn't give us the right-of-way, but we found out since that it's the tracks plus 12 inches. It's like 12 inches past the tracks. There is no real right-of-way. But that's why I would...
Do they know that?
That's what's recorded. It's a little scary driving down there if the trains come right now.
I would think. I wouldn't want it to be more.
You pull over and watch the train, is what I recommend.
You show a dotted line for a four-foot-high decorative aluminum fence.
Yep.
So, would that likely be nearer the building than the berm we're talking about would be? So, the berm would be on the riverside of that fence?
Yes. It would be toward, in between the tracks and the building.
Right.
The final location of the fence is gonna have to be worked out, whether or not we're gonna be allowed to build a fence on the right-of-way. 'Cause there is a current existing right-of-way for utilities in that area that the city has.
Other questions from anyone? Comments, thoughts?
Assuming that you started in the spring, what would be the intended completion date?
Boy, hold my feet to the fire on this one, or can I just give you a ballpark? With this type of construction and the amount of site work that we have to do up front, and this is a six-to-nine-month build.
Pardon?
Six to nine months is what I would foresee, just because we have a main water line that has to be located and run through here that the city has agreed to help us with. We have storm sewers, and plus, we have two new public sewers that are being built in the property as well, so the site work and everything. If the winter's mild, we'll try to get going early, but six to nine months is what I would think.
For Phase 1?
For Phase 1.
Mr. Chair, we might consider 12 months completion date on Phase 1?
We can start with, we can start today.
Well, if we're gonna set it that way, give me a year. Because, I mean, I don't know, I can't foresee...
It's 12 months.
We've had soils report done, but we all know what was on that site, and I'm not sure what all came out of that site. 'Cause we did, when we were doing boards, we did hit one very substantial piece of concrete.
Very good calculation.
Thank you.
Well, I think I can certainly speak for all of us when I say we are pleased to see this finally. Come to us.
It's taken a few years.
Yes, it has.
The economy kinda took that little dip there, otherwise I don't think I would be standing up here and it would've already been built.
So, if there are no further discussions or...
I just have one question. What's happening with the rubbish removal? You know, because normally, you know, when we see things go in, you know, there's like an area that people put their rubbish. I'm assuming that the garbage truck is gonna come out and through the gated area and pick up everybody's trash.
Correct.
Right? Okay.
It's just like any other residential development, everybody's responsible for their own.
All right.
Yeah, I don't want a dumpster situation.
I, not at all.
I appreciate it.
Because, you know, that could be one thing that could be missed, you know? All right.
Any further questions? If not...
I have a question.
Yes?
Regarding a statement on the memorandum that has been given out. It says bolded, "The submitted plans are preliminary only. Approval cannot be given until final plans are submitted and reviewed." Is that only for engineering purposes?
Yes, it is. Anytime that these projects, they're probably where things change as they continue to work on the final development plans. I would expect these plans to get to be about this, this thick when we're done here. Our engineering department has been outstanding in working to get it to this point. There's obviously some details that would still need to be worked out at this time, but they were comfortable enough with what was shown here to give the preliminary approval. Their engineer has been working well with our engineering department as well.
So, if we grant approval tonight, there's no reason that they would need to come back in front of the planning commission, correct?
No, no, they would not do.
Okay.
If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion.
I would, I would move approval of, what's the number on this?
Here it is.
There we go. Case 14-0047, with the completion of the first day within, the first phase within one year's time.
I would like, I would like the motion. I don't know if I would change it.
You're gonna amend the motion?
Amend the motion. Only stating that with special exceptions given the one-year time, because that's usually, we only give six months. There's gotta be something, I think it's gotta be a stipulation why we're doing it for a year, or else we're gonna set a precedence.
Well, I picked the 12 months with the fact that gentleman says six to nine months, and I'm factoring in maybe three months for inclement weather. I think, I'm sure they'll do it within the six to nine month period, but...
Based on the starting point.
But based on the starting point, based on future weather conditions, I think it's a fair number.
I think your motion needs to kinda say that we're not setting a precedence for the year timeframe.
We've done this in the past.
I get that, but you know, like Commissioner Nash is saying, you know, you don't wanna set a precedence from this point on.
I'm just saying, everybody might ask for a year.
Yeah.
See, everybody might ask for a year. So, I'm just saying, you know, for this specific project. I mean, I agree with you 100 percent.
Historically, we've added a little extra time than what the appellate speaker requests.
True, but never a year. Years, we've never said a year.
Never done a year? Where would you go, 11 months?
No, no, the year's fine. The year's fine. The year's fine. You just gotta say why.
You just had to stipulate why.
You just gotta stipulate why.
A year in your motion, Dan.
I think I made myself clear. I'm thinking of inclement weather that retards our construction periods.
Well, I think if the motion applies to this project only, which it obviously does, then we're not really implying we would do the same on any other project.
True. For this project only.
Yeah, there you go. For this project only.
If you feel we're setting a precedent, I'd be very happy to amend my motion to indicate 11 months.
No, no, no. No, no. The year is fine. The year is fine.
As long as it's specific to this project.
Specific to this project.
Right. Specific to this project, one year.
By definition, this motion is only for this project. That is not in question.
Perfect. Perfect. Mr. Chair, would you state the motion and see if Mr. Koloris agrees with what you understand it to be?
Well, I'd rather have Mr. Koloris restate.
I'd rather have the chair.
All right, then, as I understand your motion, it was to approve 140047 with the provision of completion by 12 months from start date.
Sounds right.
Perfect.
Do I hear support?
Second. I like that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yes.
I'm just worried what's under the grill. I know we cleaned it pretty well, but...
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is old business. Do we have any old business, Mr. Stumpel and Mr. Prophet? None denied, or... I see no one here to give public comment, therefore, we are adjourned.